I'd like to call an order. The Iredale County Board of Commissioners four o'clock pre-agenda meeting for Tuesday, June the 3rd, 2025. At this moment, I'd like to ask the county manager, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We actually have a few adjustments. The first one is the removal under administrative matters, and that will be item 8.4. So, we need to remove that from the agenda. And then, the next one is under closed session. We need to remove attorney-client from closed session, and then add property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A5, and also to add personnel, which is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A6.
So, we'll have three to go over, three items.
I'm sorry. Yes, we'll have three items total, economic development, property acquisition, and personnel under closed session.
Thank you, ma'am. We do not have any special awards or recognitions tonight. We do not have any, we do not have an appointment before the board, but we do have three public hearings tonight at the six o'clock hour, and I'll turn it over to the county manager. That way, we can highlight those.
Okay, absolutely. We do have three rezoning requests, and Mr. Todd is here to answer any questions the board may have. The first one is a request to rezone .296 acres on the corner of Old Mountain Road and I-40 interchange.
Do you mind going over all these, Matthew?
Sure, and I can do the PowerPoint if you want, or I can just touch real quick on each of them. The first one, there was no opposition, unanimous vote from planning board. They're just squaring up a property line. They're already existing business. They bought a little triangle piece from the neighbor and just trying to match the zoning. Again, no opposition on that one. The second one is a little, this one's an interesting one. It's essentially started as a home-based business, 70s, 80s. The business format changed. I think it was automotive. It's changed over to storage over the years. They've added and grown and done well, but it's always been zoned residential. They've expanded to the front yard. It was brought to our attention at that point, and looking into it, they needed to apply for the rezoning to be in compliance and to be able to expand and build their business. This one hadn't had a public input because it is conditional. Those that showed up were in support of it. At planning board, there was some opposition with some concerns over stormwater on the backside. I think that's been going on a long time. There's not really any regulations to address that stormwater issue, and the planning board did vote to approve this request. The third request on Flower House, this one, and I'll clarify because staff did support this one, it did get a vote from planning board to deny the request. With planning board feeling the request probably should be in the neighborhood business rezoning request instead of a general business request, or at least conditional. Planning staff supported it because it does match the land use plan. And looking back from Flower House Loop north, Flower House Loop has been a dividing line between commercial and residential since 2001 at least. In 2001, there was an exit 42 land use plan that was adopted and put in place, and at that point, it kind of drew a line at Flower House Loop and said, north of Flower House will have a commercial nature and south would be residential. So, in 2030, that land use plan further supported that vision, and then in 2040, well, in 2045, the 2045 plan again confirmed that division as far as residential versus commercial. So, that's just sticking with the plan. And again, planning board's concern being that maybe general business was too intense. But again, everything on that north side of Flower House Loop is identified for future commercial development.
Does the applicant, did they indicate what they may put there, or do they have any interest after the planning board meeting of considering doing a conditional, changing to conditional?
So, at this point, I believe it's just for marketing purposes, rezoning it, but the visions of some type of contractor's facility has been mentioned, as well as office space, and the contractor's facility would require the GB zoning, hence is why I think they're requesting GB. I will point out that since they got an unfavorable recommendation from planning board, there's kind of a catch on that. If, if they were to decide to withdraw it before you guys vote, or if they had before now, they have to wait at least 180 days before they can resubmit, unless this board feels that they're making significant changes to that request. But that's if they withdraw it before it's voted on. If it's voted on and it's denied, then it has to either wait 12 months if they put a different request forward, or 24 months if they tried to do the same request. So, just sharing that for clarification, since they did get a unfavorable recommendation from planning board.
We would have the option to table for further conversation, or for us to be able to review or to reach out to staff and have our questions answered. So, we're not making like a call on the spot this evening, correct?
Yes, certainly.
Without any kind of negative impact on that application they have submitted currently.
Would you do that after you close the public hearing or before?
Go ahead and open the public hearing because you've advertised that, and then you can continue the public hearing to a date certain.
Continue the public hearing versus table?
Well, or close it, but if you, if you plan to discuss it or allow the public to discuss it anymore, then you would continue the public hearing in order to keep it open and not have to readvertise.
So, just do the public hearing and then look at?
You could leave it open or table it with the public hearing open, so if anybody did have a comment later with potential changes, they could comment. Just an option.
Right, I'm just using the term continuing instead of tabling it because you are keeping that hearing open.
On the second one, Matthew, do you have any concerns with the rezoning as far as the runoff? I guess you don't have a remedy for it now, but if, again, if we would reject it as is, would they consider a conditional so you could request, or you could require something for that concern that was expressed?
So, that one is conditional, so if they were to agree to a condition to address the stormwater, I think planning board felt the stormwater issue's probably been a long time event based off how that property has developed over the years. Also, the farmer on the backside, you can see in the area, has recently cleared land too, and it's all part of that same drainage. So, it's hard to pinpoint who's responsible. It is, it is all down slope, so.
I got it.
Okay. Anything else for Matthew on this?
I'm good. Six o'clock's fine.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing, and I asked Matthew just for, so he can explain at six, because I always ask this question, why would our staff recommend it when the planning board turned it down? Explain, say out loud at six at least, or you can do it now again, but their job is to go ahead and answer that question if you don't mind for the record, because people ask that question.
Sure, I mean, we're looking at the land use plan to make, to largely drive ours, and we don't have the luxury of hearing from the public when we send out those staff reports with that recommendation. So, I feel like that's the role of the planning board and you guys to listen to the public, where we're really basing our decision based off the land use plan that's been adopted. But yeah, I'll share that again at six.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. County manager brings us down to administrative matters.
Absolutely.
You know, kick those off.
So, the first item is a request from the sheriff's office to approve a five-year service agreement with Axon for in-car camera system for LPR, or ALPR, for new vehicles, and to upfit an existing prisoner transport van with a new camera system. Mr. Joseph Revett is here to make this presentation to the board.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The sheriff's office requests to add additional 26 camera systems to our in-car camera. It'll be under the same agreement that was signed last year for the original 49 that we did, and also add a prisoner transport van redoing the camera system on it.
Any questions? Do you have consent?
Consent.
Sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Information Technology Services for approval of a Spectrum Ring Central contract. Mr. Joey Hoseza is here to make this presentation to the board.
Afternoon. Hope everybody's doing well today. So, our current my telephone system that we're using right now unfortunately is being sunset at the end of 2029. My concern really stems around, if we wait longer than now, stems around the availability of hardware. They've already stopped manufacturing of most of the hardware, specifically the switches. So, I don't want to get ourselves in a position to where a year or two down the road from now, we have some electro, you know, a storm, and we lose five phone switches. So, I'd like to go ahead and move with it now. Ring Central's cloud-based gives us a lot more options than we currently have. It'll allow us to terminate all of our copper lines by the time we're into, you know, by the time we end this project. So, I would say, in the end, year one is not going to save us money, but years two and forward will, worst case, break even, but probably spend less than we're spending right now on our current.
Is that the one you sent us an email about? Or I saw the explanation on it, maybe in our notes, what all it does. It gives you a whole lot of options.
Yeah, it gives you, you know, instead of just typical desk phones, you can do a desk phone, Bluetooth headsets, you can even have an app on your cell phone. So, there's a lot of ways to use this phone system.
I think there's, there's one benefit, of course, going to a cloud-based system, but another benefit is transitioning from the copper lines, because those, those lines are becoming more and more expensive over time, because it's something that's not readily provided, or as far as the companies wish not to continue to provide those. So, transitioning and trying to get off those copper lines, it's a huge benefit for us.
Any questions on this one?
Consent?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, Joey also has the next one, and that's a request from Information Technology Services for approval of a contract with Cantera Networks for a fiber network build-out.
So, on this one, you know, a lot of our sites are connected back to us via AT&amp;T, what they call their ASE, it's just switched ethernet. So, we've been having a lot of trouble with these AT&amp;T connections, specifically solid waste and facility services. So, middle of the day, sometimes three and four times a day, this network's just dropping. And AT&amp;T has provided no support, and instead tried to sell us a new product that's basically the same thing with a couple more bells and whistles. So, what I'm looking at at this point is building out this Cantera network, which will allow us to completely walk away from AT&amp;T. I mean, you're all aware of the NCDIT subscription costs that come along with these AT&amp;T circuits now too. So, there's, there's really no benefit with sticking with that any longer. So, this will address those ASE circuits that are dropping. It will allow us to bring three new sites online back to the county. So, we'll be bringing on Perth EMS, Troutman EMS, and the convenience site on Watermelon Road. Those sites are gonna five to 10 times increase in speed is what they're gonna see, and they'll come back through the data center, so no more VPN usage at those sites. So, and once we get this core network in, it'll allow us to expand on it in the future and bring even more sites online.
Any questions for Joey? Consent?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have removed item 8.4, so the next item is a request from Human Resources for revisions to the personnel ordinance. And Ms. London, there she is, Ms. London Covington is here to make this presentation to the board.
Yes. Yes. Thanks. Good afternoon, commissioners. Apologize for the length of this item. I know it's a lot. It is in your materials, so hopefully you can follow along, and I'll try to hit the high notes. We are bringing to you today some changes to our personnel ordinance. From what I can tell, it looks like our last official update was in 2021, so it's been a while since we've taken the time to do some updates. And the items that we're bringing today have basically been approved by the board in other meetings, so we are just trying to adjust the ordinance language to kind of catch up to that. When we get to the pay section, which does have the majority of the changes, there were contributions certainly from that, from the HR team as well as from our administration team. So, if you have any questions, hopefully amongst all of us, we'll be able to provide any answers you need. This does require a public hearing as well. So, the first section that we needed to update is our leave section, our annual leave. And for that section, I would call your attention to a new link that we are inserting. The thought there is that we can streamline this section as well as a few others if, instead of putting the actual detail that's been approved by the board in the ordinance, we put it in a sideline document and then incorporate a link into the ordinance. So, you'll see under section B, annual leave accrual rates, and that will take employees to a table that has the rates that you had approved previously. So, again, the goal there was just to streamline that, as well as some of the language that needed a bit of adjusting, for example, going from department head to department director. So, any questions on that section? Are we good? Yeah. Okay. The next section is also relatively quick and easy, and the insurance benefits section. Several years ago, the plan or the decision was made to move away from retiree health insurance to provide a health insurance stipend to our retirees, so that language has just been amended in that section as well. All right, moving on. The section that had the most rework, and that is of course because of the recent market study project that we did, is the Pay and Position Classification Plan. We took this opportunity to revise language in several sections that describe how the plan is established, define our minimums and midpoints, so kind of going section by section there. The first major section of rewrites was to reclassifications, where we've redefined reclassifications and also tried to establish a process that will coincide with budget, but also allow for some ad hoc adjustments throughout the year with the county manager for positions that are vacant. We made the language around the reclassification study a little more generic, not locking us into every four years for a review, making it more based on the market data and what's going on around us competitively. We added in reclassification types, so you'll see a definition for both the vacant positions that the county manager has typically been able to approve, as well as filled positions that we will be bringing back before you with the budget. So, I'm going fairly quickly. If there's anything I need to stop on or slow down, please ask.
No, you're fine.
The hiring salary, or hiring rate starting salary, we redefined that a bit, because of course, we have the worksheets that we utilize now. We added in a section to describe the salary ranges and the salary plan that we have right now, which is divided into four different plans with a specific grouping for public safety, specialty positions, our admin, and our apprentice program. So, just a bit of definition in there. We redefined what that minimum hiring is, because now, of course, it's based on a formula that we bring our new hires in under, and eliminated some language that was no longer necessary. Section six was actually moved down a bit, so it'll come right back up. So, the language wasn't really adjusted, it was just a change in section. We expanded the merit increase section to include performance evaluation, giving a little more definition of what is expected. We are currently doing performance evaluations, even though they are not tied to merit at this time, but we are wanting to make sure that's in there and prominent, so our supervisors and directors can follow that section. It does note that merit increases could be awarded, but that would of course be approved by the board commissioners. You'll see delay of performance evaluations just again moved down to a different section. We simplified payment at a listed rate. There was a section we could strike there. We also did a little bit of redefinition around our trainee salaries, choosing to go away from the old work against language and going for a trainee status, and also putting a little more requirements around that, so a trainee won't be in place without an evaluation for six months, and then can't be in the position for more than 12 months. A trainee status is basically just trying to hire in somebody who doesn't meet all of the requirements. We think we can get them there, and we're moving them through a process to move them to a regular position. Section 10 also had a significant number of changes, because we redefined several of our key terminology items, and we also introduced the worksheet formula that we're using. So, starting with promotion, the most significant change there was to simplify this, and we talked about this at the board retreat, that a promotion would basically just be a reassignment of an employee to an existing position with a higher grade than the position from which the reassignment is made. So, we took away the references to promoting into a supervisory role, which was very confusing to administer, was the supervisory role qualifying or not. And then, we introduced the formula that was approved as part of the market study and the worksheet that accompanies that. So, again, if I'm moving too fast, let me know. With demotions, again, simplifying this, because it is basically what it sounds like, we're moving somebody into a lower pay grade position. There are two types of demotions, a voluntary and an involuntary, and the formula is a little bit different for the involuntary. As an example of that, we have a situation where somebody needs some remediation. They're not going to be voluntarily, or they're not going to be demoted hopefully forever. They just need some rework until we can bring them back up. So, they're going to have a formula for their reduction with the goal that, once they meet the criteria, we'll be able to bring them back up into the full role. We addressed a lateral transfer. I don't think that was in the ordinance previously, but that's basically where somebody is moving from one grade or one position to another in the same grade, and basically noted that the salary will remain, unless there's a special circumstance, which would probably be very rare. Reclassification again is defined here and adjusted down below. Flipping over to the next section. We put a little more language around our interim assignments to make sure that there was clarity there. An interim, of course, is when somebody is asked to step up into a role for a period of time while a person is away from the role, or maybe the position is vacant, basing it on the type of position they're in, the duties that they'll be assuming, a minimum of one grade differential, but potentially it could be more. If the person is in a director role and fulfilling that role for a period of time, we want to make sure we're being fair to them. They would only, of course, have that pay increase while they're in the interim. It would go back to their regular rate as they step away. We addressed schedule revisions briefly, what that would look like with our market studies, and the fact that the county manager, if there are any other out-of-sequence events we need to look at, we would call them hot jobs in my last county, meaning it's something we're really struggling to fill if we need to do an additional look into that role to see if there's something off-base with the pay schedule. It would give us the ability to do that, and of course, present as needed. And then, I think the other changes were minor, just wordsmithing. There is one item we changed at the very end to make sure our effective date of salary adjustments is clear, and we want to make sure that we're starting everything on the first day of a new pay cycle. If we go back to merit at some point, that would be on the employee's evaluation date, so just making sure it's clear in that section, even though not in use at that time. And then, the final set of updates coincides with all of this in the definition section, which is in Article 1. We just matched up the new terminology we put in the pay section to the definition sheet, so lateral transfers, promotions, reclassifications, et cetera, and changed some language from salary plan to pay plan, just to make it a little more modern. So, I know that's a lot, but I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Public hearing on the 17th for that. Does the director's employees get sent this information and have a chance to feedback with you guys before the public hearing?
So, I'm not sure how it's been handled in the past, but that was my thought, that after this evening, if you're ready to move it forward to public hearing, I can share that with our directors and our employees, so they do have an opportunity to review what the changes will be. Again, I don't think a lot of this will be new or different to them, because we've been kind of feeding it out the last couple of months with the market study, but that way, if there is anything that comes up, we can come back to you at that time with any further adjustments.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have consent?
Consent.
And just for clarification purposes, this would be consenting on the proposed, and then to set the public hearing, and then here, have the public hearing before final approval. Okay.
Thank you.
So, the next item is a request from EMS for approval of budget amendment number 45, and to accept the Walmart Spark Good Local Grant. And Ms. Caroline Taylor is here to make this presentation to the board.
In February, EMS came to the board and asked permission to apply for a Walmart Spark Good Local Grant, and of course, they were given permission to apply. They did apply and were awarded $1,000. So, we are coming to ask to appropriate that $1,000 and to accept the grant, and the funds will be used to support EMS Week.
Any questions?
Mm-mm.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you. The next several items, it's going to be the Caroline Taylor Show. So, Caroline has the next item, and that's a request from Finance Department to call for a public hearing on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, at 6:00 PM to consider the fiscal year '26 budget.
The fiscal year, recommended fiscal year '26 budget was presented at the first meeting in May, and then staff met with the board in, throughout the month of May, through a week of work sessions to go over the budget in detail. So, the next step in the process is to hold a public hearing. So, we're asking to hold the public hearing the next regular meeting on June 17th.
Remind me how if folks have questions, they can take a look at it. You said it would be at the library?
We, we have, so we have copies of the printed copies at each library branch, and then it's also online, so they can go to the county's website, the Finance Department's page, and the copy is there. And there's also a copy in the clerk's office for review.
Can you track and notify us of any questions that come in about the budget before that?
Yes, and actually, we have on the county website, Finance Department page, there is a place where anybody can go to the website if they have a question about the budget, or if they want to submit anything that is a priority for the budget, they can just click on that in a form. It gets emailed to me, so anytime anybody wants to go and submit something on that form, they're welcome to do that as well.
People just have a hard time navigating it, and then I know Beth has communicated with several, or at least one, obviously, and or two, but it's good to track it just to see what questions were, and the public aware that y'all have answered those questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any questions? Do you have consent?
Consent.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Finance for approval of budget amendment number 44 to appropriate fund balance for projects approved in fiscal year '24, but were not carried over to fiscal year '25.
So, every year at the, as we come to the end of a fiscal year, we look at projects that were approved in the budget, that funds were appropriated for, and any projects that have not been completed, we carry those funds over into the new year. So, last year, the person who normally does it was on extended leave, and so there were a few items that were missed being carried over. The projects weren't yet complete, and so we are just, those funds, because they weren't carried over, they rolled back into fund balance, and so we're asking to just appropriate for those projects again, so that we can continue those projects.
So, no extra money you hid from us? No secret drawer?
There's no secret money for it. This, this would be an appropriation of 906,725 of unassigned fund balance, and then there's 15.9 million dollars that is in assigned fund balance, so that's not part of unassigned.
Okay. Any questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thanks.
Caroline also has the next item, and that's a request from Finance for approval of a spending resolution for opioid settlement funds from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of '26 totaling $974,329.
So, opioid settlement funds that we receive, it is very prescribed, and the details that we have to do and the processes that we have to make sure are in place. And part of that is, while we do budget for the funds in our annual budget ordinance, we also have to complete a funding, spending resolution outlining how we plan to spend those funds, and then we submit that to the state for their review as well. So, we are just asking to approve the resolution for the upcoming fiscal year for the funds as outlined in the budget that we've discussed.
Any questions? Do you have consent?
Consent.
All right, she has one more item, and that's a request from Finance to approve budget amendment number 43, and to amend the Jennings Park project ordinance.
When we brought the project ordinance for Jennings Park to the board, part of balancing that budget was the sale of Bluefield Road, and because we have not yet sold that, as we're getting closer to the end of the project, we're going to have to appropriate another revenue source, which in this case, we're requesting to appropriate unassigned fund balance, to keep that, that fund in balance. Part of this request is appropriating the fund balance. Another piece of it is taking some of the unspent funds that we have in the budget and using those to purchase some of the needed equipment for Jennings Park for maintenance and upkeep.
Sound good.
Any questions? Do you have consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
You sure you're done?
I'm done.
Caroline, are you going to be here a few minutes, or are you leaving?
No, I'm here.
I've got a question from one of the fire departments, so I just need to touch base with for a minute.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item is a request from Planning for, to consider calling for a public hearing on June 17, 2025, at 6:00 PM regarding a request from Jeffrey and Susan Altrie to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville. And Mr. Matthew Todd is here to make this presentation to the board.
That pretty much covers it, but just to add a little bit, it came to, I guess, the Town of Mooresville's attention that you had a member of their Historic Preservation Commission that actually did not live in their jurisdiction. In order to keep that member on that board, they have to be within their jurisdiction from a planning and zoning standpoint. So this is an option that does exist. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac neighborhood, it does back up to Mooresville's jurisdiction, and some of the other lots that are on the west side of that neighborhood are also in Mooresville's jurisdiction.
So it doesn't annex, it just gives them the zoning jurisdiction only?
Just the ETJ for it, yes.
Just the one house, correct?
Just the one house.
And that's their request?
That is their, that is her request, yes.
To continue to serve.
Can there be anything tied to that, to where if they sell that house, it comes back, or once you release it, it's done?
Yes.
No clawback?
Correct.
So I guess a seat comes with the property?
Right.
Any other questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item is a request to call for a public hearing on June 17, 2025, at 6:00 PM for a possible economic development incentive for Project Shark Tank.
Any questions? Anybody got any?
I'm here if anybody has any questions, but I think this one's pretty straightforward.
Consent?
Consent.
Okay. The next and last item is a request from Administration to approve the minutes from the meeting on April 15, 2025, for the Board of County Commissioner meeting.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
And that's all administrative, correct?
Thank you.
Okay. Brings us down to the announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. County Manager, do you want to hit these at the floor also?
Is it okay if I do?
Yep, it is.
Okay. So we have six appointments with the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, we have six appointments with Nursing Home Advisory Committee, one appointment for Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees, three appointments for Centralina Aging Advisory Committee, Region F, one appointment Mooresville Planning Board, which is an ETJ member, two appointments Mooresville Board of Adjustment, which are ETJ members, and then one alternate position on Troutman Planning Board, which is also ETJ. So if you have any questions about what these boards and committees do, or would like to receive an application, it's on our website, or you can contact our clerk to the board, Mr. Bass.
And we do have one appointment to the Board of Commissions tonight, that's going to be Mitchell.
Yes, and that's a reappointment.
Okay. And do we have any unfinished business for the four o'clock? Everybody good? Public comment period will be our next meeting. Any Commissioner updates at the four? Good business. County Manager's report.
I can do it at 6:00.
Okay. It brings us down, we do have three closed session items. We have economic development in accordance to Norcolton General Statute 143 318 11A4, property acquisition in accordance to Norcolton General Statute 143 318 11A5, and personnel in accordance to Norcolton General Statute 143 318 11A6. Do we have a motion to enter in a closed session after a five-minute recess?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session following a five-minute recess.